Up now, you don't even need to call them.
You signed up to speak?
Yep.
Please come down.
Yep.
Einhorn, Hanson, Shine, Brenda, Banks, Jackson, John Red Kelly, Gettys, Neil.
Step right up to the mic, sir.
This one?
No, he's another guy said, Stan. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is John Riddelly. I'm here in support of twenty-five six oh four transparency for taxpayers, public contracts. I'm surprised, a little surprised that something is not in place already to review some of these projects. And I would like to relate this to the Bocci Ball Courts that were built, completed.
Okay, let's get on my end. On your part.
I led the effort for those courts and provided this comprehensive thirty-five page report. I called it Bocci Courts for HB. As it relates, as it relates to the issue statement regarding twenty-five six oh four, I highlighted these phrases, delivered anticipated value, evaluate project outcomes, and overall community benefit. Prior to the Bocci Ball Courts, Murdy Park had a troubled history. And I sincerely believe because of those courts that were completed in twenty twenty, a more friendly environment has been created there. At the time of completion of those courts, I would give these items that I mentioned ten. Very good. Delivered anticipated value, evaluate project outcomes, overall community benefit. Ten, ten, ten. But it's not enough to stop at the completion of the project. I would ask the city council consider that that be an ongoing review because those courts were great for two years. Everybody talked about how great those courts were.
Doesn't it look good on your end?
After two years, the city paid the contractor.
Your phone?
I believe over twenty thousand dollars to make repairs. I have issues, possible missteps, and I hope to investigate this further with.
I can't really tell.
Director of Public Works. Anyway, I might be running out of time. There's so much more I could talk about this. I would.
I don't know. It kind of looks like it's.
Questions about is.
Slowing down.
I was able to gain access to the EBIT specs for the project. Concrete was supposed to cure for thirty days. I took it upon myself to act as a city watchdog. I documented the process of the building of the Bocci Ball Court.
On their livestream, it looks good.
Thank you, sir.
Are you on there? You too, right?
Next speaker.
Yeah.
Hi. My name is Jim Banks. I have lived in downtown Huntington Beach for over thirty-five years.
Maybe you should stop sharing and then put it back in.
Mr. Gru, and I supported his appointment to the council. I wholeheartedly support your positions on the voter ID issue, the recent library issues, and the ongoing battles in Sacramento over housing. Important as those issues are.
Sorry, guys. We're having technical difficulties.
I wonder what it looks like with just us.
Let me go to your livestream.
It's lagged a little bit.
Yeah, but we're not glitching.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It doesn't look like we are. Okay, let me try it again.
Police ever showed up, and I know this because I have a security camera trained on that area, never showed up. After nine PM, after enduring the widespread criminal activity all day and all night, people shot off some very large exploding rockets in the alley behind my house. Sparks and debris from those rockets fell into my yard just as I let my dog out into the backyard to pee. I called the police and demanded a response. No police ever showed up. And again, I have a security camera in my backyard that covers this area. I checked it the next morning. No police ever showed up. I've spoken into many other people I know in downtown the same experience. They called the police about fireworks. No one ever showed up. This is totally unacceptable situation, and the law-abiding citizens of Huntington Beach shouldn't be forced to endure this year after year. We do not want our city to be in a state of anarchy every Fourth of July. Residents with pets are forced to leave town for several days because their pets are traumatized by the noise. And so are some veterans with PTSD. The streets are strewn with trash, and the taxpayers have to pay to have it picked up, all because the city can't or won't control the criminals. These criminal hoodlums that are causing all this trouble need to be arrested, thrown in jail, and given the maximum sentence for their crimes. We do not have to accept that this is just how it is in Huntington Beach on the Fourth of July. Now is the time for this council and the police department.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, thank you, sir. If you would like, sir, to speak to one of us, fill out a blue card. I'd be happy. If you'd like to, fill out a blue card, and I'd talk to you about it if you'd like to. Right from that officer over there.
Right in the front there.
Next speaker, please.
My job requires me to work with hospitals, hospitals and medical schools and clinics. And I have been hearing some horror stories. And I decided to take this stories that I am hearing and make a short story for the community to hear.
Is it still glitching out for you?
In the stark, sterile halls of hospitals and clinics, chilling tales unfold, stories of the heart retainer shrouded in despair. As they arrive, many are teetering on the brink of death, deprived of their vital medications like insulin, with no lifeline to family or friends to provide the help they so desperately need. In this grim reality, countless souls languish, languish without legal representation, trapped in a maze of bureaucracy with no way out. The iron grip of ice looms large, attempting to dictate the very care these individuals receive, overshadowing the compassionate judgment of docs, doctors striving to heal.
Now it looks like it.
Among the detainees is a US citizen stripped of identity as ice ruthlessly tears apart their death.
It does again. I'm going to pull it up on there.
Leaving them adrift in a sea of uncertainty. The facility buzzes with a suffocating intensity, lights glaring mercilessly twenty-four seven, amplifying the sense of entrapment and hopelessness. Outside the clinics, ice waits like a predator, ready to pounce on the vulnerable as they emerge, often in a state of critical health. This is not just a failure of a system. It is a grotesque display of a cruelty and inhumanity, a stain on the fabric of our society. But all of us remember, the tide will turn the day when we, the people, rise to demand justice, ensuring that the echoes of these atrocities are heard and that history remembers not just the pain endured, but the triumph of our collective resolve in the face of tyranny.
Next speaker, please.
And the Einhorn, forty-year age. At the last city council meeting, our mayor was confronted with his past unprofessional conduct. Speaker after speaker quoted the mayor's own hot mic remarks, which included vulgar references to human extrament and the use of the F-word when describing Huntington Beach residents.
Wow.
His conduct is beneath the dignity of this office. This is a public forum, not a locker room. Your remarks violate the code of ethics you swore to uphold. Another troubling breach of professionalism is the silence from the council, from the city manager, from the city attorney. Your actions or inactions make you complicit and accountable. I have friends in other cities in Orange County, and they read about this in the papers, and they say to me, what is going on at your meetings? This isn't leadership. This is a farcical situation. Mr. Mayor, your conduct in this chamber has been disgraceful. Your refusal to acknowledge or apologize for unethical behavior is honorable. I have friends in other cities in Orange County, and they read about this in the papers, and they say to me, what is going on at your meetings? This isn't leadership. This is a farcical situation. Mr. Mayor, your conduct in this chamber has been disgraceful.
Is he repeating himself?
Your refusal to acknowledge or apologize for unethical behavior is beneath the dignity of your office and an insult to our Huntington Beach residents.
Sorry, I was on mute.
Do the right thing. Resign.
I switched what we're watching. I got off of YouTube and went to their website because it was like.
Next speaker.
Freezing up.
Good evening. Tim Gettys in the house.
I think it still is.
I am amazed.
I am glitching big time over here.
Did not restrict public comments to sixty seconds. I guess that nine is less than eleven announced speakers and which previously has been restricted to one minute. He has usually been arbitrary and capricious in limiting time for speakers. Several of us have been, including my predecessor, several of us have been dubbed the Minutemen. The mayor has flaunted civic policy of allowing three minutes per speaker unless a clear and heightened volume of speakers warrants reduction in the time allowance. This has not always been followed. Mr. Burns, you are not a king. You are barely a mayor. While you clearly are, while you clearly are to blame for the responsibility of your office, you are not alone. Your colleagues on the day, including the city attorney, the city manager, and the city clerk are not without fault. No one in the, no one in a position of power or influence has stuck up for the community in reining in the excesses of this mayor. You are all to blame. Now, back to the All-Star game. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I'm speaking tonight to express my support for IM-18, the mayor and councilman Gruelzheim, to create a new community garden. Community gardens provide numerous benefits to Huntington Beach. I am especially looking forward to learning more about aquaponics. Like a phoenix, from the ashes of fish will rise a new produce garden to ensure fresh produce for the great city of Huntington Beach. Once again, IRJ, yes vote on IM-18. Thank you.
Thank you, Amory. Awesome. Next speaker, please.
I'm here to talk to you about the Federal Administrative Procedure Act. It is the law that is passed in nineteen forty-seven. It was.
Seems like it's worse now that I changed it to the.
All these.
Yeah. Go back, go back to the YouTube one.
Yeah, that's what I'm there.
That, it, I don't, I don't know if anybody's watching live with us right now, but it's glitching bad.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, everybody. At least they haven't started going over the kratom stuff yet.
Because it looks, when I go onto their YouTube channel and play it, it's normal. I don't know if Restream got some glitches going on or what the hell.
I'm having difficulty trying to gather my words because it's a piece of law that should not be on the books. It is the precursor to all bad stuff going on in government because Madison, James Madison, said that if any two of the three great powers, and it referred to the legislative, executive, and judicial branches of government should not be found in the same place. And that if they were, it would result in tyranny. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Burns and members of the city council. My name is Russell Neal, and I live in Huntington Beach. Listening to public comments here, you might think that some people have lost their minds, and you would be correct. We are living through the end of an era, experiencing the collapse of the Enlightenment movement, a three-hundred-year experiment to see if man's reason, apart from God's revelation, is adequate. Turns out that it isn't. It turns out that first you lose your religion, then you lose your morality, and finally, you lose your mind. The Enlightenment was always a house built on sand, and now the storm has come, and it is collapsing. My hope is that a renewed Christian order will arise to replace it. Our nation's founders knew this, establishing our nation on the law of nature and of nature's God, rather than on the will of men, whether that of a king or that of a democratic mob. They gave us a constitutional federal republic, a rule of law rather than a rule of man, a system designed to ensure equal justice under the law for everyone. While the moral law of God, knowing it, is not easy. It requires hard work and study, but most of all, a heart for it. God says that you will seek me and find me when you search for me with all of your heart.
All right, it looks like it's doing a lot better now.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Pat, Gracie, and Casey, on June fourth, twenty twenty-four, you passed an affirmation. The City of Huntington Beach City Council affirms and communicates our commitment and respect for the Constitution of the United States of America, and with special recognition that Huntington Beach is a First and Second Amendment-friendly city. You lied. You made fun of council members, fellow council members that were not willing to lie. It is clear that you have no respect for the First Amendment of the US Constitution. You cut people off. You limit time to speak, and you censor them by muting them. You complain about decorum, but you call people pieces of shit and other derogatory terms. On June fourth, you complained about lawfare, yet you have recently filed lawsuits and investigations into the free speech of others. This is called hypocrisy. Well, you do support the Second Amendment. You let people in the library carry guns last week. I'd feel safer in the library or even these city council chambers if there was a notice for abiding concealed weapons. Pat, you also said it's disgusting what's going on in our whole country. Have you noticed the current administration has suspended due process? Have you seen a US senator being pushed to the ground for government, by government thugs? The Fifth Amendment of the US Constitution, which says that no one shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law by the federal government. While you pick the Second Amendment, I pick them all. Thank you.
What is going on there?
Good evening. Jignish Patti, our lifelong resident here in Huntington Beach. I just wanted to commend the council and everything you guys are doing. I really appreciate the aquaponics and the new measures coming up with you guys. But I just wanted to make an attention here that you guys remember the end, the beginning of the movie Nightmare Before Christmas, after the Halloween, the mayor's on Jack's front door saying, Jack, Jack, we only have three hundred and sixty-four days until the next Halloween. Well, we only have three hundred and fifty-four days until the next Fourth of July, and it's America two-fiftieth. And I think we need to do something special. I think the city needs to either get a group together and start talking ideas. There's no reason, my wife and I have been talking so many different ideas. There's no reason the Ford dealership should have the highest flag in the city. We can have flags up and down Beach Boulevard on every light post. You know, I think there's something we can really go big and grand on. And I just want to make that known so that conversation gets gathered now before it's too late. Keep up the good work, guys.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Jordan Richard. I'm here to speak on the proposed bill to ban kratom in the city of Huntington Beach. I was a former dope fiend for a very long time. I spent most of my life in and out of rehab. I found kratom twelve years ago. Now I'm, I'm an author. I'm a father of five. I've lived an incredible life now. I think kratom gets extremely bad rap because there's a lot of misconception. Johns Hopkins School of Medicine has scientifically proven that kratom is one thousand times safer than traditional opioids. And with the current opioid epidemic going on in America, I think any harm reduction tool is critical. Where I think a lot of people get misconfused, though, is that kratom is just a leaf in the coffee family. There are many synthetics on the market pretending to be kratom, which are actually harming people. I travel the world now, interviewing all the top experts from the FDA, Johns Hopkins. Oh, and by the way, a lot of, I read what some people were saying about kratom from, from the FDA. However, you guys forgot to mention that the FDA just released a study that kratom appears to be safe. The memo also forgot to say that when the FDA was put under oath in a court of law to say whether or not kratom was dangerous, that they refused to. And they said that they have actually no proof that kratom is dangerous. Kratom has been used in Southeast Asia. I just got back from Indonesia about two weeks ago. For a thousand years, going back to the Dyak tribe, there's never been one single case of death. And while many of my friends have died from fentanyl, including myself, I overdosed twice in one week. Now I'm a contributing member of society. I pay taxes. I'm here. Bless to speak in front of you guys. Also, too, the former head of HHS, Dr. Brett Girwa, he is the reason why.
Dude, Jordan's killing it.
In America today. He said the only public health threat that kratom posed was if it were to be banned because people would go back to deadly known opioids. I'm sick of losing friends. And this is nothing against anyone personally here, but I'm so tired of hearing a lot of misinformation on kratom. Also, the DEA had the opportunity to schedule kratom in two thousand and sixteen, but they refused. For the first time in history, kratom is the only substance that has ever been proposed to be scheduled by the DEA, and they refused because of the millions of public, I shouldn't say millions, but thousands and thousands of public comments saying, please don't do this, from doctors, lawyers, veterans, people in chronic pain. When I was in addiction, the pharmaceutical industry and the doctors handed out opioids like crazy. Now people that are truly in chronic pain can't get the medication, and kratom fills that void for people.
Yes.
And I'm not even in chronic pain. I'm just a former addict whose life was saved by kratom. I'm not even a resident here. I drove all the way from Big Bear because this is not how much it means to me. There are people, if this goes through, that will unfortunately pass away if you guys ban kratom. What you guys need to ban is something called seven hydroxymetrogenine, which is a synthetic opioid, basically.
Thank you.
Real kratom saves lives.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sir, could you fill out a blue card, get in contact?
Next speaker, please.
Jennifer Thomas.
I love how you got that last part in.
I'm here for a quick public service announcement for all of you. Please, please, you are here for the entire city, all the residents. When you make decisions.
He did great. I mean, he was spitting out everything he could
for our city.
In the amount of time they gave.
To do what's best for our city, not just what's best for maybe you or your values. They might not be the same as the rest of the city. So please, think about it when you make decisions. Thank you.
It's like he channeled Mac.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I believe that concludes the public comments. Council members, do you have any council committee appointment announcements?
I'm going to be appointing Ben Goldberg to planning commission.
All right. Anybody else? Butch? Oh, wow.
I can't wait to screen.
AB one, two, three, four reporting. Anybody? Nope.
Jordan, you fucking killed it.
Disclosures. Does anyone have anything?
Man, oh, man, oh, man. I was like, do not cry.
Okay. Fire department.
He did great.
Oh, city manager report, yeah. Yes, thank you.
Can you turn that, hold on, Jordan, okay? Turn that down, and then let's let Jordan talk into my microphone.
The B well discussion.
Jordan, you did fucking amazing.
Thank you.
I was like, I told Jennifer, I was like, it's like you channeled Mac Cato.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because you were spitting it. You were, it's like you barely even took a breath.
Yes.
Yeah.
You did amazing. You did fucking amazing. Are you going to stay for the whole meeting, or what are you going to do?
I gotta get back home and get my kids. They're at my, I gotta go back to my dad, too. I don't want to leave him too long. He just, not having a good day today.
I know, I know. Thank you for showing up, dude. We're gonna, we're gonna sit through the whole hearing, so I will let you know what happens later on.
Well, a lot of them were like waving their head like, yes, he's right.
Oh, were they?
Okay, good.
Because we only got the camera shot of you there. We didn't get to see the council members.
Oh, is there any way you can send me that footage of me talking?
Yeah, later on tonight, I will screen record what we, do you want us on the screen, or do you want me to screen record? The, just.
Whatever's best for you, I don't care.
Okay, yeah, I'll do that later on tonight. Bye, be safe, Jordan.
Jordan, for me, oh, my God. No, he drove all the way that way, spit out some facts, and that's all.
Driving all the way back.
And that's what it's all about. You know what I'm saying? That's what it's all about. Just getting your piece in.
Yeah, and he went, like I said, he, it's like he barely took a breath.
Yeah.
Oh, that came out in three minutes, hardly no breath.
Real great on save lives. I love that.
But yeah, I will definitely screen record that for him later because you know I'm going to post that shit up. Hopefully, when I screen record on our end, it's not glitching. If it's glitching on my end, when I screen record from my live, then I'm just going to go to their, the Huntington Beach live and just do the.
Yeah, yeah. It's like, in some parts, it seems like it's not, and then sometimes it seems like it is.
Yeah, like right now, you're lagging. So I don't know if it's your, is it your new wifi?
It could be. We had, of course, you know, everything with the move's been a little bit of a shit show, so.
Yeah.
But they came out yesterday and said everything was fine, but I don't know.
You're lagging on my end, but I don't know if you're lagging. If people are watching live, I don't know if it's lagging or not.
Oh, yeah, it is. Oh, I was making a stupid face. I was like.
So, yeah, we're going to sit here and wait till they get, so the kratom ban bill is number nineteen. I don't know. Let me go look.
Luckily, my husband is a stickler for get, having the best of the best of internet, so I'll let him know that this sucks.
Yeah, because you can't, you can't stop this livestream without us having to create a new link.
I don't know if I can or not. I think I might be able to. But I don't want to chance it either.
True.
Jordan did great there. He's one of those people that speaks from the heart, and you can feel it. You know, you can always feel it. Yes, like sometimes it is, and sometimes it isn't glitching.
Yeah, like right now, you're fine, so. Oh, yeah, now it's glitching again. Trauma there. Man, he's got that deep voice.
So really, it's something to be really proud of, and we're giving the best shot to anyone in Huntington Beach. So if you're having a heart attack, a stroke, a trauma, you really have the highest level of care relative to anywhere.
I was seeing if it would glitch out if.
You're off screen. Where'd you go?
I turned my camera off to see if it would do any better.
That's awesome. Butch?
Dude, they like breakdancing on my, hold on. It's like glitching so bad, they're breakdancing on my. Okay, I miss you, Billy.
Kind of tell the story, but I'll kind of set it up. On the Fourth of July, Dr. Rom was.
It didn't help.
Floating around with our paramedics. I don't know if you had your own vehicle or not. But can you tell us about an accident you rolled upon when somebody might have fallen off a roof? And just maybe tell us a little bit about it.
What item number are they on right now? Oh, they're on number 11.
Oh, I thought it was 12.
So the subspecialty of EMS is actually, holds the same weight as cardiology, endocrinology, sports medicine, and house of medicine. It's a fellowship within emergency medicine. And so the work that our members do is really recognized in the house of medicine as well, and it's a practice. And so I like to be out in the field to, you know, just join our team and make sure that, hey, you know, we're providing the highest level of service, reducing risk for the city, providing the highest level of care for the patients, and making sure that our members can go home at night, knowing that they did the best they could to give someone a second chance. And so Fourth of July, unfortunately.
That's also cool that they were shaking their heads, yes.
Yeah, I know. It would have been cool to see in that camera angle.
Yeah.
A person falling off of a roof and, you know, unfortunately, you know, was trying to take a picture of his block party and landed onto the pavement. And so, you know, an unfortunate accident. It looked like an awesome block party. But because of the outstanding work of our members, they were able to stabilize him, immediately treat him, prevent any worsening of traumatic brain injury, and get him to the trauma center so he could have the best chance of recovery where he's.
I hate that it's glitching.
Yeah, on a good note, it's the, the sound isn't glitching.
Right.
But.
Everyone that is.
There's just, you know.
There would be no way I'd watch that if the sound was doing it.
Yeah, if the sound was doing it, I'd try and restart it all the way.
So we're really proud of that, and we're just trying to make sure that we provide the highest level of service possible.
Dr. Rom is very humble and doesn't, doesn't ring his bell very much, so I think I'm going to do this.
Yeah, it could, I mean, we had to like change modems.
Home or have something happen.
My, my husband likes to use his own modem and a bunch of stuff happened with Comcast and then we switched to theirs.
And you also have an emergency.
He's thinking about changing AT&amp;T.
His, his people, his counterparts in the fire department told me that he really saved this guy's life that fell off this roof. That, correct me if I'm wrong, that he broke his jaw or broke his mandible or something like that. And you had to intubate him in the field and it was a very difficult intubation, and maybe the intubation saved his life.
So really, you know, we just wanted to make sure that we managed the airway and together with our team, we were able to definitively secure that. And so, again, just outstanding work through our team. It's not just one person. And that's what is really unique about EMS is that with our service, we provide a higher level of care and make a bigger impact on the community than any one provider would. So I'm not going to just take solo credit for that.
Well, I thank you and, and your, your counterparts at the, at the one fire station where I met you saying your praises. And I knew you wouldn't because you're very.
I'm going to send Jordan 20 bucks for gas.
I appreciate you. I appreciate our fire. Imagine, there's not very many fire departments in California that have a.
Send me his staff.
ER MD on staff that's going to go out and ride with, with the medics. So thank you, Dr. Rom. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you all. All right, Grace.
Our fire department for another award. We're a class one fire department. A lot of residents don't know that when we have a class one fire department that helps with our homeowners insurance. It's a perk that we don't know of, and I'd like to welcome you. I haven't met you yet for some reason. That hasn't happened. But welcome. I know you haven't been with us for a long time, for very long, but I heard wonderful things about you, so thank you. And thank you, too.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, Don.
Let me double check with him, make sure this is cash out.
I say this to the chief all the time, but allow me to say it to you guys and the entire department. We are very fortunate here in Huntington Beach. We actually, we truly have America's finest fire department, hands down. And I commend you guys, guys and gals, firefighters, the whole team, the leadership for what you accomplish and what you do for the city, second to none. And I appreciate it. And wow, the insurance, what a benefit.
Man, it's, it's like bugging the crap out of me that it's glitching.
The leadership all the way down the line, so thank you.
But again, I'm glad the sound isn't.
Thank you guys very much. Independence Day recap.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Dude, were they talking about the mayor that's on here right now?
Yeah, I guess so.
Wow.
Services manager to provide a recap of.
Okay, so I got his cash out. I just sent him 25.
Add on the kickoff, that's, this is, the Fourth of July is one of my, the things I love most about this community. Not only because of the patriotism we get to share with our community, but definitely all the city apartments, departments that come together in cooperation to pull off this event.
I wish they had a share button for fucking.
To be a part of. All of you were there during those times, so definitely.
Cash out.
One of the most, we should all be most proud of. Thank you.
We'll have to get you on a float next year.
There you go.
Thank you, Travis. Honorable Mayor and City Council members, thank you for the opportunity to present a recap of our 2025 Independence Day celebrations.
Dude, that was so funny when I got such shit.
When he what?
When he said shit.
First, I'd like to thank the city council for your continued support of our events. You show up, you ride in the parade, you announce the fireworks, the block party, and we just so appreciate your support. It wouldn't be possible without you. I will begin with a recap of all the amazing events that went on that day, starting with the Surf City 5K. Starts at 7:00 AM, bright and early on the Fourth of July. It had about 3,800 runners this year. It starts at Worthy Park. You get a rundown Main Street, backup PCH. Kick off your day of the Fourth of July before you have some more festivities throughout.
Did you get the text?
And for those of us who maybe weren't looking to run first thing in the morning, there's.
Got it.
For everyone. So our local Kiwanis Club hosts the Lake Park Pancake Breakfast, which was a super success this year as well. This year was the 121st Annual Fourth of July Parade. Our theme was legacy of bravery in hopes of honoring our military heroes in anticipation of next year being the 203rd. We look to honor our military. We had really a record number of military entries this year with World War II veterans. And our community grand marshal was Mike Ali, a local business owner and Vietnam veteran as well. We had over 145 parade entries, and there were approximately 40,000 people in attendance along the parade route on Main Street. There's a little bit of downtime in between the parade and the fireworks, but we did have some entertainment on the city show mobile to keep people downtown, keep people hopefully patronizing our local restaurants. And then at 9:00 PM, we kicked off with the fireworks over the ocean.
Man, it was a two hour drive for him. Wow, Jordan. Two hour drive to go in to give a three minute speech. Much love.
That's what I'm saying. Thank you for being the one there.
I don't know who this comment is from.
It wouldn't be Huntington Beach if this was just a one day celebration.
Oh, dude. Somebody from a kid.
So July 5th, we kicked it off with the annual community bike parade.
Looks like a bot.
A beloved community tradition. This year, it was the day after the Fourth of July, so we did it a little later to let people kind of roll out of bed. It was probably a long night. Hopefully, they were at the pier watching the fireworks show. And this was the second year that we closed down Main Street for that. So we had a dedicated bike parade route all the way from Maine and Yorktown to downtown and had over 6,000 attendees for that. We also changed the schedule a little bit this year to start the Main Street block party a little bit earlier. That way, when we finish the block parade, they were greeted with music on the show mobile and something to do to, once again, keep people downtown and give them an exciting thing to keep the day going. The Ramsey Brothers were in the afternoon, and then our headliner was redneck rodeo. Wouldn't be a block party without redneck rodeo.
Dude, redneck rodeo sounds kind of interesting.
I know.
House. We estimate about 5,500 people when this picture was taken right here. So now we'll move on to some city beach statistics. So on Independence Day, we had 60,000 people estimated.
Well, I guess we're going to be learning a lot about what Huntington Beach does for the Fourth of July.
I want to know the drama.
I do, too.
Looking like, what the hell's going on there?
What did he say shit? And he's at the F word.
And sold 1,376 tickets in the main promenade parking structure. July 5th and 6th continue to be a busy weekend at the beach with 35,000 beachgoers on July 5th and 30,000 beachgoers on July 6th. A total of 5,260 cars parked in the South Beach lots. Total parking revenue for the South Beach lots in the main promenade parking structures for July 4th through 6th, $342,054. Now we'll move on to our amazing police department who worked tirelessly around the clock all weekend to keep us safe. I was personally with many of them out there as they were doing their jobs. We have the best police department, bar none. And so here are some general statistics from just the Fourth of July. Our dispatchers took 508 911 calls, 1,092 non-emergency calls, and our police department connected 79 arrests statewide. In specifics to fireworks, we received 644 MyHB illegal fireworks tips. 29 fireworks warnings letters were mailed in advance of the Fourth of July. On the Fourth, the police department confiscated 21 pounds of illegal fireworks and issued two illegal fireworks citations. You heard already some of the amazing work that our Huntington, Huntington Beach Fire Department conducted on the Fourth of July. And here are some of their statistics right here. Amazing thanks to Chief McCoy and his team. 126 calls for service, 16 fireworks-related incidents, including three building fires and a few dumpster or rubbish fires. There were 11 e-bike related incident medical calls. And the fire department between June 30th and July 5th confiscated 150 pounds of illegal fireworks. No fireworks injuries were reported between June 30th, July 6th. So that's great news. And it wouldn't be, would be remiss not to mention our Marine Safety Division of the Fire Department. They always make me laugh in our planning meetings because they repeatedly refer to the Fourth of July as their Super Bowl. And they're not kidding. The work that they do to prepare for it is incredible. And this year, it was especially challenging with high surf and riptides that made their job. It's particularly challenging this year, but they were well up for the task. These are their amazing stats just from the Fourth of July. 152 rescues, 2,268 preventative actions, 261 enforcement contacts, 14 missing person calls, and four boat rescues. So these are just the incredible work that our Marine Safety Division does out there day by day. Wouldn't be a recap if we did not spend some time to thank everyone who made this event possible. So I would like to thank PSQ Productions, which is our event management company. I would particularly like to thank Stacy Newton, who I know many of you know. Fun fact, this was her 25th parade that she was involved in. So she's an invaluable asset to the community, works so hard year after year. So we'd like to thank her for her invaluable efforts for the Fourth of July celebration. Our Independence Day board and event volunteers, they worked tirelessly the whole weekend to make it seamless for all of you, for all of our parade entries. They work the fireworks stands, they're out there at the block party, and they'll take a few weeks off, but they'll be back in August getting ready to plan for next year's event. Our city staff from pretty much every department, this event touches all of us. We work hard all year long to make this an event that our community can be proud of. So our public safety departments, our public works, community and library services, woo woo, HB Information Technology Services, community development, code enforcement, and our finance and treasury. And cert. By our event sponsors who make this possible, again, the Mayor Family Foundation. And a thank you to our Huntington Beach residents and visitors. Their smiles and their enjoyment is what we do this for year after year. They keep coming out and supporting this event, and we hope that it's something that they continue to be proud of. As Travis mentioned, we are such a patriotic town, and so what better way to show that off than having the biggest parade west of the Mississippi? And with that, I will close and open it up for any questions. But I do want to mention, as one of our public speakers mentioned earlier, that next year is the semi-quintcentennial. It's the 250th anniversary of our country, and we've got some exciting things up our sleeves for you. So stay tuned because it's going to be an exciting year.
Watching the replay, there's no glitches on it so far. You're on mute.
No, I just want to thank you.
I'm going to screen record our part.
The volunteers who touched on Stacy, Andy, the whole team.
Can you hear me now?
This is a huge citywide effort. I truly feel it's our best display of how we come together as a city. I love the history component, being on city council. So Henry Huntington brought, who was a rail tycoon, brought the first red train car to town in 1904 on Independence Day and had a parade to celebrate that event, and we've had a parade ever since. So we always say it's the longest running Independence Day parade west of the Mississippi, and it's so impressive how we can put this on out of our little suburban beach community of Huntington Beach. This is my third year in the parade, and I felt this year was.
Oh, parade.
Every year gets better. There was so much patriotism.
Remember that, was Hawaii or Washington?
Pride from little kids on up.
The parade.
There was no really big safety.
I think it was Washington.
So I thought that was amazing. And Jim Nash, who spoke earlier, touched on it. I can assure you that we have been planning for the semi-quintcentennial for quite some time. We've had some meetings just after Independence Day, already planning for it to really kick it into high gear, but it's America's 250th birthday. So we're going to go as big as possible on every single event next year, whether it's Independence Day Parade, the airshow, the US Open, like it's just going to be big, big, big. So although we raised the bar really high this year, it's going to be even higher next year. And we all really appreciate the community coming out and enjoying it. It's an amazing event for our city, and we're really proud of it. So thank you, guys.
Andrew.
When you said, big, 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 I saw Public Works and.
These whole things are cool.
It is glitching.
But no, it was an unbelievable event.
So I'm going to go, I'm going to, I'll probably screen grab.
So how does the turnout this year compare to last year, as well as some of those revenue numbers that you listed?
Absolutely. That's a great question. So the revenue is higher this year for parking. We were at about 300,000 last year, and we're at 342,000. That is in part to raising the parking rates for the daily rate. So thank you to city council for approving that. And then we are down very slightly in terms of overall attendance, but very similar. So we had about 65,000 people on the beach in 2024. However, in 2023, the numbers were much lower and we were at about 30,000 because.
That's a lot of people, man.
Was on a Tuesday. So we are benefiting from the event being on a Friday, and then next year for the 250th, we will be on a Saturday. So we anticipate that that will draw large attendance numbers as well. For the parade, this year about 40,000, yeah, about 40,000, and in 2024, we were at 45,000. So 24,000 was 2023. So again, a big jump from 2023 to 2024, but down just slightly for 2025.
Okay, okay, yeah, big jumps. And then this is kind of an off topic question, but in terms of the Safe and Same Fireworks stands, do we get sales numbers on that? And then how did that work out for all the foundations and the groups that were obviously picked in the lottery?
That is a great question. The Safe and Same Fireworks program is administered through our fire department. Chief McCoy, do you happen to know if we have numbers on that yet?
Uh, no numbers yet. I think we can get them for you.
Yeah, no worries. Just curious.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Don.
No real questions. Just wanted to let you guys know. I thought you did a fantastic job. Huntington Beach All In provided a great atmosphere for families. I was very impressed. And now I'd like to praise the police department. Starting off the parade, the first person I saw was Chief Parra, big smile. And just want to commend Huntington Beach Police. And to the gentlemen with the, with the calls, it is very difficult when you have a mass influx of people to field these calls. They have to triage the calls, and every call to the caller is the utmost of importance. But I think they did a fantastic job. There's just no way to cover everything. The legal fireworks can be a little, little wild. But All In, I just want to commend our Huntington Beach Police Department. Best of class, second to none. So and then the staff, the fireworks show on the pier, I was attending it on the pier with my wife, and it was impressive. Great music, great vibe. And to Casey's point, I'll just close on this. You know, all the way from Huntington Beach, all the way down after the parade, rode down to Newport with my wife, just down the boardwalk. There was so much energy for the United States. It felt just different. It was uplifting. There was a lot of patriotism, a lot of positivity, and there was something that was palpable. I could. I could feel it, my wife could feel it, and people we talked to felt the same way. So just congratulations to the city Huntington Beach for pulling off another incredible event, three-day event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, now we move into consent calendar. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mayor, I won't be pulling anything, but I'm requesting abstention to item 14, correct? Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk.
All right, I'll move the consent calendar. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right. Clerk. Can you call roll, and with Don abstaining from 14?
Councilman Twiney?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
All items I can vote on, yes. 14 abstained.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Gruhl?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Item number 16, pulled by the city manager.
Kratom is item number 19 for everybody watching. Also, again, I want to just apologize if we're glitching. The sound shouldn't be glitching, but
Sorry, I'm over here screen recording the Jordan's part.
Okay, council member items. First is gonna be, uh, item submitted by myself and Andrew Gruhl. Community garden with multi-trophic aquaculture. Andrew, go ahead.
Sure, you didn't want to cover the multi-trophic aquaculture?
You know, I'll let you break, uh, your, uh, let you get used to saying something in this meeting.
All right, excellent, excellent. I'm really excited about this one, obviously, as I've always said, food is the great unifier. We recently started having a conversation about the gardens because we came across and had the opportunity. Pat did a ton of work with the team here in reacquiring some land. And so that is one opportunity. However, just speaking from a grand perspective, looking at different plots throughout Huntington Beach, I said, "Hey, where is the opportunity for us to actually utilize some underutilized property in order to establish not just community gardens, but something similar to what, many people don't know this, what actually existed at the Huntington Beach High School?" So about 10, 15 years ago, Greg Garan, who's very involved with both Surf Rider, as well as a teacher at the Huntington, science teacher at the Huntington Beach High School, he started a, an organic vegetable garden that also has
They talk a lot.
So this is the integrated multi-trophic aquaculture. The role of the fish in the garden is actually to create a closed-loop system. So when you're growing vegetables, right, you're trimming the vegetables, you're feeding the fish with the vegetables, and then the fish obviously swim in a clean pond that's monitored. And then the effluent, or the waste, ultimately the fish poop, which is full of nitrogen, that flows back into the vegetable gardens to create an organic fertilizer
I hope they go over with the ma, the deal is with the mayor.
Closed loop of the system.
I want to know why the mayor
Thinking, and it's actually something that both the
Is using derogatory stuff.
NOAA and many other EPAs, both state and federal, have been looking at in terms of introducing that, especially in urban areas throughout the United States, in order to both create an opportunity for, you know, biodiversity, economic opportunities, community opportunities, and just generally having people understand where our food comes from. It takes minimal energy. There's opportunities, not just for the input from the community, from the gardens, but also leasing some of these plots so that people can actually get involved. They can establish those green thumbs. And the city then can also utilize it as a vibrant hub through which they can throw events, have farmers' markets. So the opportunities are limitless. But I think that the fact that here in Huntington Beach, we've already established the footprint for this, and it's been done for 10 or 15 years through the Huntington Beach High School, just proves that it can be done in multiple areas and ultimately scaled out. Huntington Beach, Surf City, USA, committed to marine stewardship and marine conservation, an ocean-friendly garden is exactly what we should be doing in order to promote what our mission towards sustainability and biodiversity here in Huntington Beach is. And then I also want to throw out there, the seafood element of this, this is not a commercial operation. The fish really act as an organic and natural filter for the vegetable gardens. So the city wouldn't be harvesting these fish, or ultimately volunteers and people working within this garden in order to sell to other businesses. The fish are really kind of stagnant in certain situations on a grand commercial level.
Goodness gracious.
Especially when it gets to vertical, multi-trophic, integrated aquaculture and
Man, these, this dude.
You know, ultimately what we want to do is establish this framework.
Sorry, I was screen recording and kind of like re-listening to what Jordan was saying.
He did good.
So they wanted him to fill out a blue card afterwards for contact information, meaning they want to continue the conversation.
All positive, non-political, this is great. This is exactly what we should be doing. So I'm excited to have the
Man, I just, it's so cool, he drove all that way. Came up in there, said we had
Two hours.
Yeah.
Two hours.
But I think it's something that we
And then got in the car and went back.
And, you know, do a little bit of environmental analysis, and then ultimately determine
He's showing out for his state, boy, I tell you. I'm glad he didn't make us cry, though. Like that one time. That one time in Bangham.
Pretty much what you were gonna say.
One time in Bangham. Yeah, Jordan, it's like I said, like, he speaks from the heart. So it's like, when, you can feel it. When he starts crying, it's like
Now, I love gardening, and that's why, as soon as Andrew said something about it, you know, he wanted to find someplace for a community garden. I'd been eyeballing that land for years. And we acquired it with the help of the city attorney, city manager, staff, and everybody
Goodness, now they're gonna go along about how they got the land that they want to build this garden on.
It's, I'm stoked.
Yeah, it just was kind of serendipitous the way it all happened as you're looking at that
Hey, it's like, come on, man.
We walk into Andrew's office, and he says, "I want to start a community garden." And it just all kind of came together. So good job on that land, and great idea.
Thank you. And to mention, when they walked in the office, I was covered in tomatoes and vermiculite and everything, so it was very organic.
Let me all touch
Very much so.
About getting that land, that old, I guess it's like rail easement, right?
Spreckles, sugar beet.
So all the way on the north end of town at Rancho Road by Boeing, and that traverses all the way east to Edwards. And that's basically 11 and a half acres of land that the mayor was instrumental in getting a quick claim back to the city. Andrew has a great idea when this was first brought forward. I called him, I'm like, "This is amazing." And I said, "Unfortunately, I think you're still gonna get attacked because it's just the way it is." And it's the, it's actually sad that something like this, where, you know, from a lot of the people that actually come to our meetings and yell at us to unite the city, and "Why are you dividing us?", I've seen them attack Andrew over this, when this is the epitome of a uniting item and project for the community. And it's all good, it's all positive vibes, and it's just, to me, it's just so disheartening that I've seen comments that are attacking him for this. And it's really just simply because us up here just happen to be on the other side of the political aisle from these people. That a lot come to meetings and
Did over a garden?
Because this project's really amazing. Andrew touched on it, it's a community garden, and a lot of people reach out to him that want to volunteer and help. And that's what this really is about, is that, you know, this is a unifying project. It's gonna create a lot of value for the community, it's really gonna put us on the map.
It's like, y'all get upset about a garden, y'all need to work together.
I read is that the reason why Andrew's doing this is so he can grow and raise fish, and then sell it at his fine dining seafood restaurant, Calico Fish House? So that's all you need to understand how absurd it is. It's really good intentions.
So re-watching our live with Jordan on there, so it only glitches like at the beginning when he starts speaking.
So it doesn't do it the whole time?
No, someone posted both.
Project for the community.
Well said, Casey. You know, what I wanted to point out, a lot of Casey just said, so I'll keep it real short. The bottom line is, there's seven city council members at any given time. This doesn't mean that we're not gonna stop trying to be fiduciaries of things that are important regarding infrastructure, things like that. But along the way, we do have multifacets. We have staff that can make these ideas come to reality, along with the guidance from those that bring these items forward. So this is an item that is just a goodwill gesture.
Damn it, so it glitches in the beginning.
That doesn't mean
Then the middle it doesn't, and then it ends with it starting to glitch again.
Of course we are, we're always looking for things. But our terms, we will be bringing all kinds of different items. Some will be business-related.
I just checked them out.
Some will be recreational in nature.
My upload speed, and it says it should be good. So I don't know, I mean, it's gotta be the modem or something like that, you know?
So I commend Andrew and Mayor Burns for that land, and
Everybody's on Wi-Fi at your house.
Oh, yeah, dude. But still, I mean, it was like that at the old house, and it always was fun.
Chad bringing things, everybody's gonna be bringing things that we believe
And we even have like an internet extender in our bedroom, so
The reason we bring them forward. So on that note, I love the idea. Nothing brings people together more than, you know, gardening. You see it, and good job.
Butch? Nothing? 30 seconds. Okay. All right. All right, I'll move the item. The only, the recommended action leaves it all to staff. But I'm gonna make sure the recommended action is to, well, of course, include me. But especially we'll give Andrew a chance to this. To explore the feasibility of creating a community garden with an emphasis on utilizing multi-trophic aquaculture, MTA on city property, and report back to the council with the finding results within six months. So I want us to work together. I don't want us to be aced out of it. So I want you to have a, because you have the experience. So based on the outcome of the feasibility study, consider the deliberate and appropriate next steps for the project development, site identification, environmental impacts, timeline, and community engagement. So six months at least, if we do it before that, we'll bring it as soon as possible, in other words. I'll move the item.
Second.
Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Twiney?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Gruhl?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Item passes 7-0.
All right, now number 19, item submitted by Gracie, myself, and Casey, prohibition of the sale of the distribution of kratom.
Oh, here we go.
Before anybody panics, let Gracie explain it.
Thank you. Like you said, a lot of people are misunderstanding exactly what we're trying to do here. As a matter of fact, we are still in the researching phase of this. The Narcotics Officers Association has been very helpful in helping us understand the effects of kratom, how it affects our communities. And we've actually seen several other cities and counties take action to protect their communities. The Orange County Board of Supervisors has implemented restrictions on sale and distribution of kratom, recognizing that it poses a threat, especially to our youth. Other cities such as Newport Beach, San Diego, Oceanside have also taken steps to prohibit the sale of kratom. And additional cities are looking to join in, including Riverside. While some cities are going really, really strict and completely banning kratom in any form, there are other ordinances, such as like the county, that are focusing on the synthetically or the chemically altered version of kratom, which is the one that causes hallucinations, that causes injuries. And I'd like to look into taking that direction. There is one ingredient, they call it 7OH, because it's called 7-hydroxymitraginine. So short version is 7OH. Some people say that it's helped them get off of drugs and narcotics. We want to make sure that we are open to listening to everything the community would like. But we also want to make sure that we are supporting, protecting our kids. Sheriff Don Barnes has already signed a letter in support of the Orange County Board of Supervisors regarding their restrictions on kratom. Kratom.
Kratom.
I'd like to ask our city manager to work with our police chief and our police department into putting together an ordinance tailored that works for us within our community to discuss kratom. I'd like to have it also defined, the differences between the kratom leaf and 7OH, which is the one that's causing all of the issues. And so I'd like to get that started. One thing that is really concerning is that 7OH is 30 times more potent than morphine. And a lot of the community members don't know that, so this would be a great opportunity for us
That number changes a lot.
All the time.
Draft an ordinance, but also to learn about kratom and how it can affect our children, our communities. So thank you, Pat and Casey, for joining me on this.
I'm glad. Continue the conversation.
Yeah, I think that the speaker that we had during public comments brought up a lot of really good points, right? We don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater. I do have stories of people that I've worked with over the years in which kratom has been a harm, had really a harm reduction strategy. It's been a help for them, however, it's been a pure, unadulterated product. And over the past five or 10 years, I've seen story after story of gas stations and smoke shops and all these other places that are selling this synthetic and laced kratom. People are dying, right? So it, there does need to be guardrails on this, and it's incumbent upon us right now, you know, to get ahead of this, to make sure that we don't have 15, 16, 17-year-old kids who hear the word, and they think it's something cool, and then they go into a smoke shop and they buy some illicit drug that they don't understand what it's gonna do to them.
How are they doing that?
We've really got to get ahead of this from a safety perspective. So I really appreciate the fact that you're pulling it together right now and drawing out those details.
And it actually is accessible to kids right now. There are no restrictions at all, so any child can walk on in and purchase them.
Then you go after the retailer.
Kratom leaf has been given a pretty good report. They say that's pretty helpful for a lot of things. It's the nefarious parties that synthesize it, or
Yeah.
Make it synthetic, that is the harmful stuff, make it like 150 times what the regular leaf can produce, and
Say 150.
It's those kind of people that make it tough on the rest of us, and we gotta live with the harm that it does. And especially making it accessible to kids just blows me away that it's happening. And, but it's, again, an example of greedy.
Yep.
SOBs.
I better not say.
Ah, he'll get in trouble like the mayor.
Well, I'd like to commend you three for bringing this forward. This just starts the understanding and the research on what is the right way to potentially, if you use the word "regulate," or to put those guardrails on something that may have a lot of benefit, but it certainly has some downside when altered. You know, I personally have a story just through some dear friends of ours. So it's a second, it's one level away, but, you know, a loss of life just recently. And as they look back over the phone texting and the patterns of behavior, it was tied to, you know, kratom, in whatever form, I'm no expert. But I believe that there is so much awareness and unawareness of this drug, if you will. I'm not familiar with it to that level, so I commend you all for bringing this forward so we can start to get a better understanding as we look to put the guardrails, as Andrew said,
Yes.
in place to make sure that it's safe. Whatever we end up with, I commend you for starting the process. Good for you guys.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Butch?
Instead of just coming up here and banning it.
Yep.
All right.
I'd like to move the item.
Second.
Okay.
Clerk, please call.
Councilman Twiney?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Pat Burns?
Aye.
Mayor Pat Burns? Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Gruhl?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Item passes 7-0.
Okay, so they're moving it.
All right, move on to item number 20.
Okay.
All right.
I commend y'all, that, good job, good job.
Yeah.
The
Open in the floor of learning.
Hell, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item I call
Which one was the mayor, though?
I thought it was that middle dude.
Me too.
But it might be the dude, uh, no, I don't think that's
It might be the dude with the blues over there on the left.
Yeah.
But usually they sit right in the middle.
I could have sworn that dude in the middle was the mayor.
I can't see the names on the thing.
I can't either.
Do you have it on the, on your phone?
Oh, yeah.
I, I hear, I hear me saying, "Okay."
Oh.
Okay, so I am glad that they did this, because the last hearing that Jordan went to, it was Newport Beach, and they, they didn't care. They did not care about what anybody said in the, in the audience, you know? Even the AKA Big Dogs was over there, you know?
That was the one that Jordan poured his heart out into.
Yeah, and we freaking cried. And we freaking cried. Oh. But I love what they're doing. They are continuing the conversation, and they are going to learn how to differentiate between pure and adulterated kratom versus the synthetic 7OH shit.
Yeah.
So, once again, as you can see in live, this was live, right now, you can see how 7OH is what is bringing it up to the city council members' attentions. That's the problem.
Well, and then when you have all these people, you know, having stories of knowing people that are having issues with it, or people even, you know, I don't know, say, go in the emergency room or calling poison control, and they keep calling it kratom because there's no distinction.
Yeah. And like what the last guy said, you know, if I remember right, he was talking about a recent death that happened, and they were going through the text messaging, you know?
And they called it kratom.
Yeah. Was it kratom, or was it 7OH?
Yeah.
Because that...
I think that's the biggest problem, is like, people just calling it kratom.
Yeah.
You know, that's just...
We've been screaming this for the longest time, stop calling 7OH kratom. It is not kratom. 7OH is not kratom. Somebody should make a song.
I'm no song maker.
Me either. Put a song and put it on repeat. 7OH is not kratom. Say, no, it's 700.
They're like one of those 10-hour-long videos, you know, like on YouTube, how they play the same thing for 10 hours.
In a loop.
Yeah.
But, yeah, y'all watched in real time what happens, you know? And I have absolutely no doubt. She said, narcotics officers, what brought it to their attention, you know? Man.
It was also nice to see them acknowledge, you know, Jordan coming in and...
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, that was a good turnout. A good turnout. Anything other... You know, when they're opening... When they're open to learning and not just, you know, saying that there is no such thing as synthetic kratom, lying and just shutting down their entire, you know...
Like Newport Beach, they shut...
Yeah. They had their minds made up.
Can you go back on there?
Yeah.
Laura said they're discussing it now, but I don't know if she's on a lag.
Oh, true. Hold on.
But along with Mr. Councilman...
What's good, what's bad, and hone it in to make it as perfect as possible for everybody. Case?
I'll just say, I appreciate you guys bringing this forward. I just look at this as a... It's a great idea, and another just example of us up here fusing the private sector into government, into the public sector. There's a lot of great private sector experience up here, a lot of different skill sets and experience. And I truly feel that's the role of an elected official, is to bring in the private sector in the...
Because like what you just saw, when you go back into the live, you got to fast-forward it.
Yeah.
Get to the current part.
I hate it when you can't turn the captions on. Sometimes it's better to see what they're saying, or, you know, see what they're saying instead of hear it.
Yeah.
Is basically coming back before council, you know, we're going to set a baseline and maybe...
Yeah. I think she might be on a lag. Check her word.
So, really, the city owns this asset with not a lot of responsibility. So, really kind of bringing that in, and then something like this is great, because as we're trying to fix our structural budget issues with our recurring expenses exceeding our revenues...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'll just wait till she catches them.
Well, that was a good outcome. That was a good outcome. Oh, Jordan's in the chat.[1554.04]